Very well, why don't we get started? Focus Springfield, can you hear me?
I can hear you fine.
No, yeah, focus Springfield, oh, we're recording, okay, good, just make sure that we're recording. All right, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Good afternoon, everybody, my name is Councillor Victor Davila, and welcome to the first meeting of the Public Safety Committee. The time is now four three, and I am joined by committee member, Councillor Tracy Whitfield, good afternoon, Councillor Whitfield. I'm also joined by Councillor, committee member Councillor Fenton. Also, I'd like to recognize Councillor Govan, Councillor Allen, Councillor Hurst, and Councillor Perez. I believe that's all the councillors that are joining us right now. Commissioner Corbett, welcome to the first meeting of the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Councillor.
You're welcome, and I look forward to a robust update. The purpose of today's meeting is to sort of open the lines of communication. On the agenda today, we have what I call a current update of the state of SPD. I had asked for some information from the Commissioner, and so we're gonna be talking about the total number of officers, how many personnel do we have, how many are out on injury, how many civilian personnel we have, and also the updates on the police reforms, which is a hot topic that has been talked about for a while. So with that being said, Commissioner, it's four four. We do have a five o'clock maintenance and community meeting. After that, we will try to finish as soon as humanly possible, but definitely before five o'clock. So Commissioner, the floor is yours.
Okay, Councillor, thank you. Good afternoon, councillors and everybody else on the call. I'll give you a quick, maybe not quick, but I'll give you an overview to the best of my abilities where we stand right about now as far as some manpower and some initiatives, some programs, and where we're at. As of today, Springfield Police Total Officers, 463 sworn officers. That would include 388 officers and 75 supervisors along with 38 recruits. That already is down to 36 recruits. So subtract two officers and subtract two recruits, because I know we lost two. So that's 386 officers, 36 recruits. The Recruit Academy is only in week three. They have to make it till June, so I wish, I wish and I hope we'll graduate 36. I seriously doubt it, we're probably looking at graduating maybe around 32. So there's 440 active officers, 15 officers are out on injury, two are out on long-term disability, seven are out on suspension, one is out on administrative leave. COVID numbers fluctuate daily. We were at one high point, second week of January, up to 42 officers suffering from COVID. We currently have 12. So what's happening now is it's very manageable as officers come back, some officers go out, but I'm managing the COVID numbers. So you have 12. Total civilian personnel, I have 71, and that would include cadets. And we are short on cadets right now, because I just had, I believe it was nine go into the police academy. So nine cadets are now recruits. So we are looking to quickly kind of streamline the cadet hiring process and getting out into the schools and to the neighborhoods. And my luck is better with community colleges, Holyoke and STCC, for recruiting some cadets so that we can hire and get that manpower back up again. Amount of active cruisers, we currently have 123 marked cars in our fleet, eight Harleys, eight Enduros, one ATV, one command truck, one bear. And it's not a bear, bear, it's a large truck for SWAT utility that is bulletproof. One property van, about 80 unmarked vehicles for police use. So there's about 380 police vehicles assigned to the fleet. In 2021, we had 261,129 calls for service. To compare that to 2020, where we had 266,398, 2019, 263,782, 2018, 276,212, 2017, 280,775. So I suggest to you, 2021 is a low number, but it was pretty comparable to 2020, and that certainly may be a COVID issue.
What was 2020, Commissioner?
2020 councillors, 266,398. So we're down about 5,000, and that could be attributed to the COVID situation. Total arrests in 2021, we had 3,180 arrests. Compared to 2020, we had 3,251. To 2019, I had 4,279. To 2018, 4,565. 2017, 4,796. Again, 2021 was our low stat for the last five years. It could very well be COVID, it could be other reasons, but we'll see if and when we ever come out of this COVID kind of lockdown, shutdown society and things get moving again. You could see a spike next year. For an update on SPD police reforms, as you know, we're fully operable in the body warrant camera program. We began training the officers in the winter of 2019. The program was fully implemented in June of 2020. The Springfield Police Department was one of two in the country that got the program up and running during the COVID years. We were called the model program by DOJ, and I outfitted every police officer, including plainclothes and including narcotics or the firearm investigative unit. Body warrant camera hours recorded in 2021, we recorded 24,310 body warrant camera hours. We've taken the initiative to streamline the complaint process. It is part of the DOJ recommendation to streamline that. Complaints and compliments are now available via online forum in English and Spanish or on our new website. As recommended by the DOJ, we did implement and start up a new Springfield website, SpringfieldMassPolice.com. It includes all the forums available to anyone. You can send in a complaint, you can send in a compliment. You can find everyone's email, it's one-stop shopping. We've gotten a lot of compliments on the website. We also arranged it so you can now mail the form to the IIU office, which is located at 299 Page Boulevard. There's new numbers and there's a new location, Page Boulevard location. We've received several compliments. It's easier to get into for complaints, it has secure parking. It's a lot better than the Maple Street location. As far as use of force, the Springfield Police Department use of force policy now meets MPAC. And if, I apologize for a lot of these, sometimes I get confused. MPAC, Mass Police Accreditation Commission. As you know, the reform bill is gonna require our police departments in Massachusetts to be certified. We are aggressively trying to meet that goal. I believe we can meet it. I've had Judy Crowell working on that. We have to update all our police policies, procedures. She's been implementing the standards into each policy and procedure, which will be needed to meet certification, and she's moving along pretty well. We cannot be accredited. It's often asked, why Commissioner, why don't you try to be an accredited police department? The building fails accreditation standards. So until at some point in time, the Springfield Police Department has a new headquarters, which would meet the standards of MPAC and the accreditation, which most of it is the building's layout and design for handicap accessible, two elevators, still the cells, the holding cells that actually meet the Health Department standards. We do not, we fight all the time to try to get standards in there where we can at least hold people for eight hours should they not be able to be transferred to Ludlow or somebody's looking to bail them out. We just about make it between the formaldehyde and the asbestos in some of those cells, the old cells that cost to renovate just does not make sense. We have renovated a few of them so that we can make use of them. For the use of force, I also have certified our use of force instructor Sergeant Ed Van Zant. He went through MPTC, which is Mass Police Training Council's standards. He's recognized in Boston. The use of force that we use through MPTC, we explained that to the DOJ, that was acceptable and certified by them. As soon as this agreement comes through, and I don't know if you know where we're at with the DOJ reform and agreement, we, negotiations were completed in October, and DOJ, the Springfield Police Department, my command staff, the Law Department were agreeable to a decision made and how we were gonna move forward at this point. Everybody agreed to it. We have been waiting for that to go in front of federal court. It has to be approved by a federal court judge. It's similar to a consent decree where both sides are amenable to the progress that we can make, and we do agree, these changes will be done and we can do it. Why that hasn't happened, I don't know. We thought it would happen in December. Then I was, I was thinking it would definitely happen in January. It has not happened yet. I know Attorney Pacula is slated to retire. However, he is, he is gonna stay on until this agreement is met and made. So I look forward to it. Three of the areas that DOJ wanted, and I agreed to, but I don't see that we cannot disagree with three of these main.
Mission, the first thing that goes through your mind?
If, I'm sorry, I apologize, Commissioner. I want to call the members to please mute themselves.
Use a recycled gun, it can cost up to 50% less than a new.
Can you mute everybody else but the Commissioner and myself, please?
I'm sorry, Councillor. The three areas that I agree to is, one, they wanted us to have the field training officer program. Two, they wanted us to have the evaluation program. And three, they wanted us to have a pyramid of disciplinary progress so that you discipline people in a progressive disciplinary way. I agree to that, I think we should have it. It's tough on this department that we do not have a field training officer program, because when we put out large number of recruits, the department is young enough to whereas they are starting to train with officers that only have been on the job for one, two, or three years, and that's very difficult in and of itself. So we did all agree that it is a change in working conditions for both the Supervisors Union and the Patrolmen's Union. So I know both are in discussions to those three areas so that I can get them going as soon as the agreement passes with DOJ.
Commissioner, my apologies, would you be able to state those three changes again, please?
Sure, yeah, Councillor, the first one is FTO program or Field Training Officer Program, so that I have officers trained, to train new officers once they graduate.
Yeah.
The second was an evaluation process. Currently here at the Police Department, you're only evaluated on your work ethic and your production once, one year after you graduate. Then we have no further evaluations. That's wrong, it's harder on me. It would be easier if, when they come up for promotion or discipline, if you're a 20-year cop, I should have 20 years of evaluations from people you work for. You know, so that made sense to me, I said absolutely. They should be done yearly on everybody, all the way up. And they're working on that with the unions. And the other one, they call the disciplined pyramid. It has to do with progressive discipline. It says like you'll start off at the written reprimand or the small suspension for the small infractions, and you go up to termination. Unless it's an egregious event, and then it could just be termination. So I know Attorney Mahoney is in negotiations with both the Patrolmen's Union and the Supervisors Union, and I know those three things are being negotiated on, and there's great progress on all three, especially the field training officer program. They've gotten some real good policies from other departments. I look forward to it, and I look forward to implementing it. It's very difficult to graduate 30-plus brand-new officers and put them out in the streets and learn from another rookie officer, learn from somebody with less than five years on it, that's been difficult. So those three things are being negotiated with the two unions. As far as the IIU policy, the IIU policy meets MPAC standards. We got a new IIU policy. It does meet the Mass MPAC standards, but it's still under review in that agreement. If, once the DOJ agreement is signed, then the new IIU policy would come into effect. It does meet any reform bill qualifications. In 2021, we had 16 total citizen complaints. Eight were for rules, regulations, and courtesy. Four were for physical hands or courtesy. Two were for physical using the equipment. One was for physical excessive use of force. Thirteen were not sustained, one was unfounded, two led to retraining. In total, discipline, since I've come on board, I've terminated seven officers, none in 2021 for the citizens' complaints. So that's where we stand with the citizens' complaints. It was, the body worn cameras have been a godsend to us with the citizens' complaints. And they're a good morale for the officers, because if they didn't do it, we can prove they didn't do it easily. If they did do it, it's easier for the IIU investigators and for me. So what was a tough program to sell to them in the beginning, they didn't want to be recording everything they did, is now the kind of program where they don't want to go out without one. So it has been very successful. And we moved along quickly with that, and I think you saw that recently, how invaluable that is. We've reached phase three of our certification process. Judy Crowell wanted me to tell you there are different phases for certification. We're at phase three, which is self-assessment. The Post Commission and the MPTC are working together and drafting certification standards for law enforcement agency. So right now, I would tell you that the Post Commission is not quite set up and firm. I have asked the Post Commission for some answers to questions that a lot of police officers and police supervisors have, and the answers aren't coming yet. The answers are, we're not set up yet, we don't have a phone, we don't have an office, but we're working on it and we'll get to you as soon as we possibly can. We have been sending them what is required of us, which is every citizen complaint that comes in. Now they want just the non-minimal ones. We have to get a definition of what a non-minimal citizen complaint is and make sure we're cooperating and sending them. They have been getting everything from us since July 1st, which was the date enacted. So they have not answered some questions as far as when they will be able to look at officers as far as certification or decertification. So that is not in play yet. When they are ready, the Post Commission is ready, every officer in the state of Massachusetts will have to be certified by the Post Commission. If you are not certified, you can no longer be a police officer in Massachusetts. So when they're ready and they set that up, they're gonna go through, I guess, everybody's officers that we have on the roster for every police department. And if you have what they're going to deem as a substantial suspension or substantial IIU record, they are gonna look at you individually, and it could cause decertification. There's some questions with decertification they have not been able to answer. My big one with decertification is if you decertify an officer and they can no longer be a police officer, does that mean I have to terminate them or I will terminate them? Does that mean I do not keep them on the payroll here as some other? I mean, does that call for termination? They're not sure of that yet. Also, if they're decertified and I terminate them, what does that do to their pension? So there are some really important questions that we have for Post, and they're not set up yet to answer those. As soon as they are, believe me, we'll get the answers, and I will pass the answers on to you. There's also, if the DOJ agreement goes through as planned, the recommendation will call for an attorney in IIU. That attorney in IIU will be reviewing the citizens' complaints as they come in and will be in discussions with the captain over in IIU, who is also an attorney, and they will help me decide which way to go with each complaint so that every complaint is handled fairly and consistently. And that's just to the level of investigation we put into these complaints, whether it's a AI, and all these have been suggested to us by PERF, which was the money we paid to have them come in and do a study in the IIU as best police practices, and we went over them with DOJ when we were in the conference calls with DOJ, and it was agreed upon by them. The AI is Administrative Inquiry. The PI is a Preliminary Investigation, and the SO is a more serious investigation into matters that are serious, that rise above that non-serious complaint status that I think we'll see come out. So this attorney in IIU will be a civilian. They'll have to do a job description for me out of the Law Department or City Hall, and we'll have to get that rolling, and I'd like to do that as soon as possible. I see that as a help to us. Somebody, a civilian eye is looking at these complaints as they come in saying, Captain Murphy, we recommend that this be a serious investigation, takes a lot more, or this is an AI where somebody has to be explained that this is not the correct process. And an example of an AI is if they file a citizens' complaint and it has to do with a dispatcher. Say they call 911 and they were talked too rudely by someone who answered the phone in 911. Well, the dispatcher's no longer work for the Police Department. So the AI would answer their complaint. We're not just gonna let them hang in and say, you know, doesn't work for me, not my problem. No, somebody has to follow up on that, it gets a number, and they explain to that person that this employee does not fall under the Police Department. Here's the correct way to go to file that complaint. So that would be an example of an AI. The PIs, the preliminary investigations, would be like rudeness complaint. Somebody got a ticket and they say the officer, you know, was very rude, very curt to me and wouldn't listen to my, you know, explanation of the, well, then it's a PI. Then that's, that employee, that officer's commanding officer does the investigation. The serious ones, someone, you know, comes in and says, they took a picture of me in the booking doc and they sent it to friends and they sent it out, a violation of our social media policy. That's gonna be a full investigation of the IIU, because as you know, that could lead to termination. So those are the different types of investigations I can have, and I think the attorney out there will be very helpful to me in deciding that. You have a question, Councillor?
Thank you, Commissioner, for that overview of where we are with the Police Department. I do see, I believe, Councillor Fenton had his hand up. Is that correct? If you indulge me before I pass it on to you, sir. If you indulge me for a quick second. Thank you, sir. Commissioner, thank you again, thank you for the report. Just to the quick time check, it's 4:25 now. Again, if we don't finish this robust discussion, I would love to come back and continue the discussion.
Absolutely.
In the next month, because I think this is critical. As I stated before, my goal is to have, as I'm sure it's yours, Commissioner, to have the best police department in the country.
I got more stuff for you if you're ready. I didn't want, I didn't want you to lose a question if you had it, but I can keep going.
That's okay, why don't we, why don't we start asking? How much more, longer you have, Commissioner?
Well, I can tell you about, I'm sure there's questions about the Firearms Investigation Unit that was narcotics, if you want that rundown of why or how or what.
Yeah, can you give me a quick overview on that, please?
Sure, in July of 2021, I modernized the narcotics office and turned them into the Firearms Investigation Unit. And that was because we had an uptick in illegal firearms on the street. There's a couple of reasons for that, not just the uptick in firearms, and I wanted to concentrate on the investigation of how these illegal guns are getting onto the street. But there's also a big uptick in ghost guns, and that's a problem that somebody at some point in time is gonna have to wrap their head around and get new legislation, because there's absolutely nothing at this point in time that covers ghost guns. Massachusetts has some real good gun laws, but nobody is stressing, you and I could get together tonight, Councillor, and we could go online and we could get the parts for an Uzi or for an AK-47, and we could build that and put it together and use it, and maybe neither one of us have a license to carry.
Commissioner, can you tell, can you tell the commissioners, I'm sorry, can you tell, I'm sorry, can you tell the viewers and adults on the call, what is a ghost gun?
Sure, a ghost gun is a gun that's not made by a manufacturer, therefore it doesn't have a serial number, therefore it does not have to be registered legally. So the gun shops aren't selling them, so you don't have to produce a license to carry. So it's a big loophole in mass gun laws, because you can go around not being licensed to carry, and young people are figuring it out, and they're buying these, they send them legally. You buy the barrel of the gun from this company. You buy the trigger of the gun from this company. There's a company in Nevada that sends you a kit. There's ways of getting around these gun laws, and you can put together a working handgun, and we come across them often. Fortunately, I know there's media on here, but I will tell you that the Firearms Investigation Unit has a way of trying to track down and get these people that are getting the part, which I think is important. I think it's important to find out who's buying what and why, and try to work with the legislature on some laws that address the gun laws as far as ghost guns go. Another reason why narcotics went to the Firearms Investigation Unit was the narcotics trade and the narcotics business is now very much multi-territorial. They have caught on greatly in that they don't stay one place at one time. The major drug dealers don't use the same car, the same address. They use multiple addresses, multiple cars, multiple locations, safety deposit boxes. They're getting much more sophisticated. Therefore, our jurisdiction is Springfield only. It made only, it made sense to invest in these task forces. I have the information, but I have an officer in the DA's task force, the FBI task force, the DEA task force, the Marshals task force. We have officers all over, and what it does is it brings in the same amount of information so we can battle the narcotics trade. But we also have people in each one that can, that has jurisdiction to serve the warrants. We just did a big one with Holyoke State Police last week, where, you know, the information was Springfield. Our officers did the warrant, but the locations were Southwick, South Hadley, and Holyoke. But it enabled us to put a big dent into a drug trafficking unit, get the guns, the illegal guns, and get the so far $260,000 in cash that may hurt them a little bit more. So that was the reasons for the Firearms Investigation Unit, and they, every week, they take off two, three, four guns.
How many guns did we take last year, Commissioner?
We took almost 300 guns, illegal guns off the street. And we're high already, we're high already for this year. Let me, I'll tell you exactly here, Councillor, I'm sorry. Yeah, last year, 255 illegally possessed firearms seized, which included 131 large-capacity firearms and 27 ghost guns. So already, I think we have seized over 40, 45 guns this year. Last night, we seized a semi-automatic weapon loaded with 10 rounds of ammunition, and it had a laser sight on it from a domestic. It's scary, and there's so many of them that that was the cause for this bureau. And for disclosure, as soon as the, actually before the unit was formed, DOJ was advised, we are not hiding the narcotics unit. They are now the Firearms Investigation Unit, they are the same people. So DOJ was aware of that and okay with that. It wasn't like we said, okay, the issues DOJ reported narcotics, aha, I'll rename them. Now that, we were very forthcoming with that. We said, we have a problem with firearms, and with drugs, we need task forces, not local. We gave out Narcan to all the officers, they've been in use. In 2021, officers saved or at least administered 139 individuals with Narcan and brought them back to at least a conscious state for transportation to the hospitals. We have six BHN clinicians operating. There were 1,927 clinician calls in 2021.
How many, Commissioner?
1,927 BHN/officer responses for mental health calls.
So that's considered a crisis call?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Quebec units, I have 16 officers and one supervisor. They've completed new training. MPTC put in new training for school resources or Quebec officers. They've completed that, and we have a new MOU with the School Department in regards to student resource officers, because the old MOU allowed for them to get involved hands-on, which was simply getting officers in trouble and not, they were putting officers in a bad spot. We changed that. Officers and student resource. Officers in student res- resource positions or in school positions can only get involved if there's an act of assault. So we are no longer, you know, to be administering any sort of discipline in the schools. But if there's an act of assault and progress, we can stop them. Um, there's the professional, professional development training is going on. They've had two now, and that was one of my big problems. And I mentioned that to D O J. I'll tell you, uh, if you ask me what one of the, my big problems in Springfield Police Department is middle manager buy-in and responsibility. Um, it's easy to promote somebody to sergeant lieutenant, but it's it's a tough responsibility. And to me, they have to get involved and and get in on the base level. So it wasn't that they didn't know what to do as far as police work. Uh, but I wanted a course in leadership. I wanted a course in how to talk to people, how to deal with people. I wanted a course in decision-making under fire and under stress. So we teamed up with Babson. We're doing that to seven-week course. They have completed two. It's every Friday for seven weeks. The uh, the the uh, people teaching that are are from, their instructors at Babson full-time. So I have twelve in that course now. And I will continue to do that so that we can get most of my sergeants and lieutenants through that, through that course. Um, I think that's about it for me. If you have any counsel.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Commissioner. That was a a good uh, overview. Uh, and I see some of the councils already have their hands up, but if you uh, indulge me briefly, counselors. Uh, Commissioner, some quick questions. Uh, first, um, at some point, I would like to coordinate with you and the uh, to get a tour of the headquarters. Uh, I I am very concerned, what would you say about not needing certification because of the health of the police department or the building itself? And that's very concerning. We don't want a duplicate of what's happening with the courthouse. Uh, we need to protect uh, the officers' health, the uh, the the civilians, the residents that are uh, being held there. And so I, you know, have been uh, beating the drums for a little while for some bond money for Indian Police Department if I had my way. Uh, so I definitely would like to, uh, when we coordinate between the committee members and ourselves, uh, to have a tour of the facility. Uh, and uh, I would appreciate that, Commissioner. Also, Commissioner, um, I did notice that um, you talked about service calls. And I know that we had in twenty one, two hundred and sixty one thousand and some change. Uh, and what struck me was that we had three thousand arrests. Uh, so the arrest seems to be, even though the amount of calls went down, the arrests have been constant. Would you mind giving me a quick uh, thought on that, Commissioner?
Well, the arrests have gone down too, uh, Counselor. In in twenty nineteen, we had over four thousand, twenty twenty, three thousand two hundred and fifty one. And twenty twenty one, we're showing three thousand one hundred and eighty. Um, and again, you know, what COVID didn't, didn't damper at all was the drug trade and the drugs, the guns, the gangs and the domestics. You know, those are unchanged with with COVID issues, so.
So most, most of these arrests coming from that particular group then, Commissioner?
Most of them, yes, sir.
So it will be basically drugs and drug-related arrests?
Drugs, gangs, guns, domestics.
Okay, very well, uh, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, we'll turn it over now to the uh, my colleagues for questions. Uh, just a quick time check is four thirty five. Um, Counselor Fenton followed by Counselor, Counselor Whitfield.
Thanks, Mister Chair. Um, and thank Commissioner for that overview. Um, I had three questions. I hope they don't take too long. If they, if they turn out to, then I'll stop and yield to Counselor Whitfield. But um, the first one is just um, regarding the crisis calls with B H N. And you referenced that we had almost two thousand of those. Um, you know, periodically from uh, various residents and uh, groups, not just locally, but also nationally. There's calls to uh, outsource certain police calls to uh, non-armed or civilian personnel. And I know that we're taking a step in that direction of having healthcare professionals there, but also having S P D officers who are armed and able to respond to uh, situations that sometimes evolve right before our very eyes in a way that we can't expect. Is there, are you familiar with any communities in Massachusetts that are doing um, non-police responses to police calls? Guess what I'm getting at is communities that are sending just organizations like B H N instead of organizations like B H N escorted by S P D?
Yeah, Counselor, I I know Northampton and Amherst are doing that. We're we're watching that to see how that goes. Um, and we have talked to B H N about that. And uh, but I will tell you, um, I did a report for uh, someone doing a a doctorate in in in, I believe it was mental health. And and the report said about twenty-five percent of the time of of those almost two thousand calls, twenty-five percent of the time, B H N has disregarded us. They are all set. Twenty-five percent of the time, we have disregarded B H N. It was a wrongful, it's not mental health. So fifty percent of the time, both agencies were needed and handled the call. So um, I examined that and I'm not really sure where that puts us. I I I think that there is maybe, uh, in in a lot of calls, don't come in as mental health when they are mental health. Uh, they come in as assaults or disturbances or someone acting irrational and and we don't know what we have. But I I am watching Amherst in in Northampton very closely and we'll see in a couple of months here how they, how they do.
And and currently, how do you, I mean, how does dispatch distinguish between a situation where you might want to have B H N and not? Do they just, they use discretion?
They do, and they're training those call takers all the time. And a lot of them are easy. They come in for a mental health call and they send both. And a lot of times, B H N is not available and they just send the cruiser. Cause I only have six B H N working, three are on days, three are on evenings, one is probably off. Usually, the two of them are tied up. So the officer get goes and gets there. And if there's a disturbance in progress or somebody is injured, handle what they can handle. And it's kind of like the body worn cameras. When it first started, they were skeptical of having B H N civilian on their calls with them. Now they don't want to go to a call unless they got a B H N worker with them. So i- it's, as soon as they're available, they're call calling for them. So, but some calls do come in as mental health crisis. Some calls come in, uh, mental illness and and those are dispatched properly. And like I said, other times the officer gets there and he says, well, this isn't an assault and progress. This person is suffering for some mental issues. Is there a B H N? Sometimes B H N goes independently and they want the cruiser, so it it's tough. I, I'll watch Northampton and Amherst, but their their call volume is is, might not be enough for me to judge right away.
And when they, when B H N does come, does the city compensate them? How do they, how do they get paid? And God forbid, something was to happen to one of the B H N workers. Have we indemnified B H N or?
Yeah, we have a, we have, Counselor, good question. We have a contract with them through the law department and there is a grant also helping to pay for the B H N workers.
And so if, you know, while they're there, they're an agent for the city, the B H N worker. And so if something, if something happened to the B H N worker, then we've got some type of an agreement that summarizes what obligations the city has to indemnify and cover any damages that might unfortunately happen to the worker while they're there on that municipal call.
We do, Counselor.
Okay, all right, well, um, thank you very much, Commissioner. Uh, Mister Chairman, I have two other questions, but I definitely don't want to monopolize the time. So I will yield and if there's time later, I ask you come back.
I will. I will go to your counsel effect, thank you. Uh, Counselor Whitfield.
Thank you, Count, um, Chairman Dabila. Thank you, Counselor Fenton. You asked a lot of the questions I was gonna have um, about the mental health piece. Um, but I do have a couple of additional and the uh, maintenance development subcommittee doesn't start until five, so we don't really have to get off at four forty-five. It's going out of one lane and getting into the other one. So we don't have, we don't have to have a hard stop at four forty-five.
I was planning to go past that, Counselor.
Yeah, if the chairman sees fit.
Absolutely.
Okay, Commissioner, um, my question was, you said there was like a thousand some odd uh, mental health calls, correct?
Correct.
How many did B H N actually respond to, attend to?
Those are the ones they actually responded to.
Yeah, those are the ones they actually responded to?
Yes.
Okay, and um, you know, B H N is a reputable organization. But do you look at any culturally competent organizations to also partner with, um, to attend these mental health um, calls?
I I tell you, Counselor, I have not. I, we we joined up with B H N uh, for a couple of reasons. Their location on Liberty Street, their ability to transport people there and their ability to know some of the the clientele that we may be dealing with on their laptops right away has been very helpful. I have talked to um, a couple of B H N workers about expanding. And and I tell you, we're we're not, and I have told the B H N this. Right now, I'm not in a position where I could expand to support any other um, agency and and have police go with them. The manpower and personnel uh, position that I'm in right now is is stretched out to uh, the the B H N is about as far as I can go with Project Hope. And you know, a couple of the other projects they're working with. If if there was another social agency that wanted to start, uh, they certainly could um, a- and do whatever they feel needed. And if they needed a police response, yeah, they would call, they would have to call nine one one to be put in the queue. I I at this time can't, and I wish I could, I wish I had the officers to do so. But I couldn't support a uh, another mental health program at this time if they wanted to combine with the police. But they are certainly, uh, they can certainly go on their own and 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 whatever endeavor they so choose.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, no, I was thinking of more of the Kahoots program. And I think that I had sent a communication about it before and I received a response from Sergeant Elliott. And the response was more like, we already got something in place, we don't need anything else. It was kind of that type of response, but it it doesn't have to be either or, it could be a both. And um, the funding that we were actually looking at was um, city ARPA funds because uh, or city funding that can be reimbursed by um, the state that trickles down from the government. Because um, through that program, there is a reimbursable portion, even if the city pays it out, that the city would get back. And so we weren't necessarily looking to take any of the funds that's already in S P D. But maybe, um, and that, this is more of a T J conversation about the funds. But um, I just wanted to see if you're open to like even um, listening more about that program. Because the response that I received, it wasn't um, a a great response to me because it felt like we already have something, we don't need that. And I think that we don't have to do that to each other. It doesn't have to be either or, it could be in in combination.
Yeah, I I agree, Counselor. I don't, I don't think we could ever have enough of mental health response at this point in time. It's 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 overwhelming, it overwhelms the the police department and B H N. So um, I don't think that would be the right answer. The the thing that I get concerned about is to protect uh, these workers wherever they come from, whether it's from another social agency. When you respond, mental health is so um, sporadic and and can, you know, somebody can go from being very calm to very violent. And I I want to make sure we protect everybody. And and one thing I have with the B H N worker is they have a police radio. They've been trained in it, they've been trained in protocol and they usually have a cruiser with them or near them um, to help out right away. But, you know, I I'm certainly open to any other program that comes around. And and like I told Counselor Fenton, I I'm very interested in seeing how Amherst and and Northampton do because then you could run a couple of programs at once.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll yield to my colleagues, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield, Counselor Govan.
Thank you so much, uh, Chair Dabila. Uh, and thank you, Commissioner, for that report and the questions. And it seems like um, mental health is a topic to talk about. And that's something that's, you know, even the governor, I think, said it when in his outgoing speech. Um, it's something that's direly needed in the state, in the city. We don't have enough services. Um, B H N is not enough. Bandada is not enough. The Center for Human Development Program, they're not enough. All the programs that we have in Springfield and beyond are not enough to serve the population that we have. And especially coming out of this pandemic, um, a lot of people's mental health has been affected. I'm actually um, concerned about officers that your guy, you, that are going out on these calls and the um, the trauma that they're exposed to and how is their mental health being addressed? You know, um, I know that B H N clinicians are trained. I used to be a B H N crisis clinician. I would go out on those crisis calls with or without a police officer. Um, and you know, we're trained to do that and we're trained to, you know, experience the trauma. Cause a lot of times there's might be some young children that might be having some issues. So I'm I'm, um, I guess concerned about that and how the um, police department is addressing the mental health of the officers.
Yeah, thanks, Counselor Govan. And and one thing that D O J recommended too is 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 some sort of a self-help or stress help for the officers going through these uh, these traumatic experiences. And so what we did was we started a peer-to-peer um, program here and and we trained about twelve to fourteen officers. What I found that the most important time is to talk to an officer before they go home at the end of their shift. Once they go home and they start to handle these issues on their own, it's trouble. Whether they're starting to drink or whatever they'll say have to do or they're they're angered by things. So the peer-to-peer is three shifts, twenty-four seven, they call them. Uh, these officers, uh, what I found, and I I use the the model from New York, is what I found that officers are initially more willing to speak to somebody who works with them than anyone else. But once they speak with someone who works with them, that person should have the resources to continue on. So that's what's been happening. Everybody involved in the recent um, traumatic situations have been referred to peer-to-peer. And then the next day, we had a total critical incident debriefing. Um, and we've set that up and that also gives them um, a lot of other resources. And I have been uh, much more willing, I think, and and more receptive to carrying these officers administratively with pay while they get the help they need to come back. Um, I talked to somebody from the N Y P D that set this up and they said, Cheryl, it's like um, it's like going out into a rainstorm and trying to tell which drop of rain got you wet. Your officers continually see so much that it could be anyone that finally triggers that. So I want to make sure they get the help they need. I try to come in and and talk to them. And you you know, on that midnight to eight incident, that those guys were the younger officers. So, I mean, when I say I saw fear in their eyes, that's human. And and you don't go through an event like that and not after the event, stop and think how close you came to death. And the difference with a first responder is they have the ability to suppress fear and anger and act professionally, do what needs to be done. But after the fact is done and you sit back and you think about it, uh, that that's when you say, oh, my God, I almost got killed, shot or wounded out there. And that's when it starts to act on you and your family. So that's why we've made sure we had the peer-to-peer and I have other resources available to them. So we are working towards that.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you. Commissioner, um, thank you, um, so, Counselor Govan, all set?
Yes, yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Mama. Uh, thank you, Counselor. Uh, just a quick time check is four fifty. Uh, I have one question and maybe we got time for two quick questions after that. Uh, Commissioner, I just want to change gears for a second and then we'll be concentrating a lot on crisis and intervention, which is absolutely critical. Uh, but um, going back to the police reforms, Commissioner, um, I I do remember, I believe it was late November or early December, uh, that we approved six million dollars to help uh, settle lawsuits against the police department. And I remember that, well, the big pitch that was made to us was that, one, it could be higher likely related. We could end up paying like something like ten million dollars. And that it was going to help to, to make the agreement uh, with D O J quicker. But yet we hear two months later and uh, can, do you have a thought on that? Um, what seems to be the holdup?
Counselor, I don't know. I I'd love to be able to tell you, I I don't know. I know that Attorney Pacula, um, that was his.
What was the question then, Commissioner?
Yeah, probably, um, Counselor. And what the holdup is, I I don't know. Like I said, we finished negotiations in October and I really thought this would uh, have been wrapped up by now. You know, whether it's a, um, the new U S attorney and 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 that person wants a chance to see the agreement, whether it's COVID and everybody's working from home or the D O J got very busy, I I don't know. Uh, I look for an agreement with them sooner rather than later because I I just don't want to be in a position where I make, well, a change in the department and then I have to cycle back and do it again. Either I wanted the reform bill changes and D O J agreement on the same track and and get this train going.
Correct. Uh, Commissioner, before. Correct. Commissioner, before I pass it on to the last two or maybe three questions. Again, I look forward to a tour of the police department.
Absolutely.
Also, I would like to later on to coordinate other meetings to continue talking about police reforms. Which I think is critical. I see you guys are pretty active trying to meet police reforms. I can't wait for you guys to be certified. That is going to be critical and a huge milestone, in my opinion, for the police department and for the city. So we will schedule a meeting at a later time to continue talking specifically about police reforms.
Fine, Counselor.
With that being said, just two more questions, Commissioner, if you indulge me for a second. Counselor Fenton, did you want to follow up with your other question, followed by Counselor Whitfield?
If that's okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. If you have one question each and then we can end the meeting.
Okay, so one of my questions was about the regional lockup. I'll save that for the next meeting. But with respect to police reform and the. Decertification process, Commissioner, that you were referencing. It's really, it's two aspects. Is that currently, is that law now and is it being implemented? And if so, what? How will that preempt in certain cases municipal investigation of police misconduct? I guess what I'm getting at is. If you have, and I've been an advocate for statewide licensure and certification for a long time for officers. If you have this process and it is to be implemented on a statewide level for decertification. Does that also speak to different aspects that? Cities and towns no longer should be investigating misconduct? Do you see what I'm getting at?
I I do, Counselor, and unfortunately. Even though my understanding is it is law, they are missing deadlines. You know, and everything is is getting pushed back because they're not really prepared. And we have been giving them, as asked. Every citizen's complaint that comes in since July 1st. So they have that. But they want. For the decertification certification process, they want the completed police investigation and what we handed out as discipline. And I think that's the only way they can do it. I don't see them having time, personnel, money or ability. To investigate, you know, some, a lot of these, if you're talking about the whole state. So having said that, they have said that substantial suspensions will draw their attention. And what I'm thinking they're looking at would be as they get an IIU or they get a person, they hear about a person. In Springfield, they want his IIU folder. They look and they see a 90-day suspension. Now, they they investigate that. They can investigate it again. They can look at it. And then at that point in time, they could say, we recommend decertification. They vote on it as a panel. Is there an appeal to that? I don't know.
Mr. Chair, I would just say, I think at the appropriate time, at some point in 2022. That question probably deserves a committee meeting in and in and of itself. Just this question of what is the, what are the channels and whose lane is what? So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fenton. Counselor Whitfield, do you want to follow with another question?
Our final question. Commissioner, what is the? Pulse on the community relationship with Springfield Police Department? And has there been any? I don't know, trainings or anything being done to build the relationship and build the trust back?
Counselor, good question. I think the pulse is good. I think we have overwhelming majority of support in a lot of our endeavors here. And and the efforts that we've been putting forth, at least that's what I hear when I'm out. That's what C3 tells me. We were at a hockey game Saturday. It was very responsive and and very good. As you know, the thing holding me back from more meetings and more get-togethers is COVID. And I look forward to COVID getting out of town so that I can go to meetings and get involved again. The events that I was able to go to over the holidays, the city. The Court Square Christmas party, the the Learn to Skate and everything. I I I met a lot of nice people that with a lot of compliments. So I think it's good. I think it could be better. I think it could always be better. I I think transparency is is needed and I I think that getting out there is important. I I look forward to getting into the schools again a- as soon as COVID restrictions start to relax.
And do you feel that that's the same in the black and brown community?
I do. That's what I've been hearing, Counselor, yes. I I've heard that from my, the Mason Square C3 officers. I I hear it from the North End, from Lieutenant Toledo C3 officers. Again, are there, are there issues and problems? Sure. I mean, I I don't think, you know, we're not going in. We've been limited, though, with, I think, the COVID. And I I look forward to getting back out there and and seeing. But to judge it on compliments, to judge it on complaints. To judge it on conversations that my officers in the community have had. So far, so good.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, Counselor.
Sorry, I was muted there. It is now 4:57. Unfortunately, we have to end the meeting for the next meeting happening in maintenance development. Commissioner, I thank you for attending. This has been a good, robust conversation.
Counselor, look forward to it.
I do look forward to continuing. I do think, Commissioner, that. The public needs to be more aware of the efforts that are being made. In order for us to have the best police department in the country. So I will coordinate with you so that we can have a tour of the police department. And we will set up a meeting to continue talking about police reforms. And Counselor Fenton, to your point, sir, to talk more about certification and decertification of our police officers, which is a great point. It is now 4:59, excuse me, 4:58. The meeting on the police safety is, is the motion to adjourn, actually? Second by Counselor Whitfield in favor?
Aye.
I think, Minister adjourned. Thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Thank you, Counselors. Have a good evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.